Okay, my clocks are showing 7:30. We are recording. So I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And I picked up the gavel the other day so I can officially call to order. Good evening, this is the January 11th Mayor and County Council Borough of Flemington, a regular council meeting. This meeting is being held in conformance with OPMAs. It's being held online only due to the COVID-19 health emergency. The links to this meeting were published in the newspapers as part of our reorg, as well as posted at Borough Hall and the library and outside Borough Hall, the on the bulletin board, as well as online on the Borough website. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're getting a weird echo from somebody, not sure who, could be me. Sally, go ahead and call the roll.
Mayor Driver? Here. Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yeah.
Ms. Hand?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Runyon?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
Here.
You're all here.
Excellent. As we always do, we'll start with an OEM Coordinator's update from Corporal Brian McNally. Thank you for joining us, Brian.
No problem, thank you, Mayor. With the Borough of Flemington as of January 11th, which is today, remains under a local state of emergency due to the COVID-19 health crisis. Our COVID numbers are currently 289 cases concurrently here in Flemington Borough. That's since March 16th of 2020, but in the last three days since my last report to council, 13 new cases within the borough. Again, there's no metrics behind this as far as where we see those cases. The numbers are only reported municipality-wide. But, you know, it should be important to note that testing is substantially increased. So because of that, cases are going to continue to increase. 100 and Countywide, 4,344 positive cases since March 16th of 2020. And that reported additional 47 new cases today in Hunterdon County. Announced today, from the Flemington Raritan School District, while it will not impact any Flemington Borough residents, the Barley Chief School will be closed for two weeks. As everyone is aware, our students attend Robert Hunter and Damar. But that is going on within the Flemington Raritan School District. So no known impacts to our students at this point, but they will be closed for two weeks, starting today. Just to touch on vaccinations, the process currently continues. The 1A and partial 1B category vaccinations are underway. Those are being done at the county level through the pod distribution at the Route 12 complexes, as well as private pharmacies such as the ShopRite Pharmacy here in Flemington. So if you're a healthcare provider, if you're within that 1A category, and or a police officer firefighter in the partial 1B category, you are eligible for vaccination at either of those sites. The mayor and I did a really good presentation on the vaccination, as well as the 100andcares.org self-test. So if anybody hasn't had a chance to check it out and go over testing, it's on the Historic Flemington Facebook page, you can check that out. We go over the mail-in kit. We actually opened one up, went through it, went through the process, and how to register for it. So if there's any residents out there still wondering how to get tested, the 100andcares.org test kit is a really good option. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Okay, hearing none. Sally, could you mute? I don't know, and that way we can maybe go through a process of elimination. And Malik, you as well, if you could mute. Great. Because I don't know where, there's a little bit of a reverb coming up. Thank you. Starting with my mayor's report, we did have an executive session earlier this evening. It began at 6:30. There were two topics on the agenda for legal advice concerning the Courthouse Square redevelopment, and also legal advice regarding Raritan Township Municipal Utility Authority, of which we are sending member to that. Both items will be addressed via a resolution this evening. And so that was what came out. There was no action taken immediately after the executive session. There is a hotel update that will be coming up. You'll see it this evening, there's a resolution. It's basically handing off the football to the planning board. And council will be done with it at that point, and then now Planning Board will take that over. You probably did see that there is a sidewalk structure that has been erected over the sidewalk in front of there. There will be no parking in front of there. They're gonna be swapping out the barriers. We have to return the barriers that are there to the county. And the contractor will be putting their own in there. And that's just to keep people from parking there. Now, you can't get out on the passenger side, and the police felt on a public safety issue, it's best to have that parking blocked off. So it's just gonna be the first infrastructure disruption we see over the course of the coming years as that project pursues. I would like to take a moment to just address what we all saw on television last Wednesday, beginning with the moment of silence for New Jersey native Officer Brian Sicknick, who was murdered during an assault on the US Capitol. Thank you. Now, I want to just address very briefly also some of my feelings about what occurred last week. You know, it was truly a stain on this nation and all elected officials. You know, whether it's the highest office in the land, that's that of the president, or the lowest level at municipal and county government. Now, we as elected officials have to remember, we took an oath to uphold the United States Constitution. Whether it's fomenting sedition because you don't like the results of an election, or standing shoulder to shoulder with those who would seek to overthrow our government, including Nazis and people carrying Confederate flag is wrong, and it's a threat to our democracy. There's nothing patriotic about seeking to overturn the will of the people and our democracy itself because you don't like the results of an election. And when it's sought through insurrection, terrorism, violence, and with lies and conspiracy, it's simply wrong, and it is a threat to democracy. And we all, I think, as elected officials, have to stand up and call that out when we see it. Finally, I do want to make note also that I believe that this evening is Tara's last council meeting with us. She'll be taking some time off to attend to having a baby. We wish her luck with that. Council will be receiving a rundown handoff, so to speak, as to things we've been working on. For Tara, I've been trying to push her, push her, push her to get a bunch of stuff done before before we leave her so she can attend to her personal business. Dave Cushing, who is one of the partners in Gavard and Cushing, will be joining us as Borough Attorney. And I'm looking forward to that. A couple of years ago, when I first became mayor, I talked with Mr. Cushing about being a Borough Attorney, and he could not do it at the time due to a conflict of interest at that point in time. So it'll be nice to have Dick on board for our council meetings going forward. So thank you. And that's all I have, and then we'll start with the council comments. Jess Hand, you'll be first, Councilwoman.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I, mine is very quick, I've been working on the citizens' working group report with Councilman Long and also on the community garden, so should have more community garden information at the next meeting, and that is it for me.
Okay, coming up next, Councilman Runyon.
Yeah, I'll be brief here as well. Just checked my calendar, first Environmental Commission meeting of the year happens to fall on Martin Luther King Day. So Sally, I don't know, is there any enough time to change that or not? So.
Martin Luther King Day is the 18th. You need to give 48 hours notice. So you gotta figure out when you're gonna do it, and gotta get notice out by Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay, so Environmental Commission meeting of 2021, to be determined. That's all I got.
Okay, you can cancel without notice however, and then schedule that 48 hours. Next up is Councilman Jeremy Long.
Good evening, just a couple of things, nothing too crazy here. So last week, Planning Board had its reorganization. There's a new chair, Jeffrey Dashna, and a co-chair is continuing with Susan Engelhardt. And there's a planning board meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM. As Councilwoman Hand mentioned, we're working, finalizing that report. It's pretty much done, we just have some minor things to tweak, and it should be sent to you, Sally, tomorrow afternoon at some point. And we hope that people read it, and you know, if you wanna talk about it, have questions about it, certainly, we're here to do that. And just looking into the future, we're, you know, I will be working with Councilwoman Hand and Councilman Johnston on, with the Citizens Committee. This is something the mayor created and put us at the helm. And I think, given Jessica's experience and my experience with the working group, we have some good, we have a good place to go, good start. I think a lot of the skeletal stuff is there, but really looking forward to engaging the residents and having people talk to each other who might not have ordinarily seen each other and different groups of people, and hoping for some constructive, enlightening dialogue. And we'll see where it goes, but that will be forthcoming in the future, and that is it for me. Thank you.
Great, and we'll have to do a resolution creating that ad hoc committee. I specifically did not do that because I kinda wanted you guys to chat about it as to where it was gonna go first. Next up is Council President Caitlin Giles McCormick.
Thank you. Quick note about the vacation, the snowflakes will be coming down, they'll be up for a little bit longer. I know sometimes at the end of the season, people are like, oh, why are they still up? But there are snowflakes, they are not distinct too, and it is still snow season, so. But that, they will be coming down in the near future, coordinating with the Flemington Community Partnership about the maintenance of them. There's always issues with them blanking, not blanking, being out, things like that. Trying to see if we can figure out how to make that a little bit smoother and less, you know, kind of frantic at the beginning of each season, and how to go forward with that. The Flemington Community Partnership, thanks everyone who came and patronized the businesses online, in person, pickups, things like that, over the holiday season. We're still around, our businesses are still hanging in there. So remember, as you go forward with your daily needs of services and shopping, that we have 400 businesses and services here in the borough. Do you want to take a quick moment to talk about, just build on the COVID-19 coronavirus situation pandemic that we've been in for 10 months? And take a moment to say, just of encouragement, with the vaccine, as it is within our reach, as people are starting to get vaccinated, there is this, I think there's this different kind of energy around town in terms of being so close to the finish line, so close to going back to normal, in some fact, that it can sometimes be extra tiring and extra, we can be extra lax with the holidays having just passed and things like that. And I just want to encourage everyone to, you know, to keep, to keep going, to keep social distancing, keep wearing your masks, keep making those smart decisions while you're able to go about your daily business and daily life. And finding that balance, I know, is hard, and it's been a long 10 months. And we still have a little bit more to go, especially with flu season, especially with the numbers that have been increasing, including in Hunterdon and the state and nationwide. And I thank you to everyone for their efforts, but especially with the recent holidays. I, it's, we have a little bit longer to go, so. So thanks to everyone, and keep it up. And that's it for me.
Next up will be Councilwoman Kim Tilly.
I just want to say that this year, I'm definitely looking forward to the respectful communication amongst us on council. I think that'll be welcomed, something different than what we experienced last year. So with that, I'll start with my fire department report. For the month of December, they had nine calls and spent 75 hours on training. So the summary for 2020 puts us at 199 incidents. 130 of those were in the borough. 69 of those were out-of-town mutual aid requests. For a total spent, total time spent on incidents for last year was 552 hours and a half. I also want to mention that in December, the fire department put into service, to service, 26 new SCBA air packs purchased by the borough. This brings the respiratory protection equipment up to the latest standard and provides an increased safety for the members. DPW, don't forget, we'll be collecting real Christmas trees only, no fakers out there. Void of all decorations, that's ornaments, lights, tinsel, garland, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There was a small water leak detected on shields on Friday that was fixed today. The library's requesting that everybody still continues to use the drop box as return books. Need to go through a decam, decontamination period. And I have an HPC meeting on the 20th. That's it.
Thank you, Kim. And finally, we'll go to Councilman Malik Johnston with his first real full council meeting. Welcome.
Hi, I got nothing.
Betsy, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry, I have my agenda here, and it went to blank. That brings us to our first public comment session. It's three minutes each, maximum of 30 minutes, you get one opportunity to speak. And if you can want to speak, you need to raise your hand. There is a hand raised function somewhere on your screen. And I will call on you, please state your name and where your your address, and if you have an affiliation with somebody that you're representing, please state that as well for on the record. We'll call John Kenzeluk first.
Am I the only one not hearing him?
No, I don't, I'm not hearing anything. He's muted, maybe? There we go. Still can't hear you. It's looking to me like he's not muted. But we cannot hear you.
Yeah, I still don't have anything. Betsy, you're muted. Betsy, you're muted.
We're all muted here. I'm gonna go ahead and promote Mr. Kenzeluk to panelist, and perhaps that will help. He is from RTMU.
Perfect.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh.
All right. I was a little bit concerned about this one, but good evening, Mayor and Council members of Flemington. My name is John Kenzelak, I'm the chairman of the Raritan Township Municipal Utilities Authority. And I'd like to speak to you with regards to a resolution you have on tonight's agenda regarding the authorization of filing an amicus brief with regards to the appeal of the C1 designation of the South Branch of the Raritan River. We're hopeful that you move forward with this resolution. We see it is very important to both Raritan Township, as well as the Borough of Flemington in moving forward with this. This does place significant restrictions on our ability to treat in the future, which could be very significant, or which will be very significant financially to the impact on both of our municipalities. I've asked our special counsel, George Tyler and Margaret Carmelli, to be available, and I'm not quite sure if they're, if they're signed on here, but if you had any questions with regards to, for me, or any maybe detailed questions with regards to our appeal of the C1 designation. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay.
I can recognize when we get to that resolution.
Okay, so just hold off for, you know, if you, okay, I'll stand by.
Excellent, thank you, thank you.
Is there anybody else, Betsy? They're muted.
All right, I don't see them. No, I just have to, I just need to remove them from panelists. If you can share with me. There's too much going on on my screen right now.
I can do that.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. If there's anybody else who would like to make a comment at this time, under the public comment period, please raise your hand. Using the raise hand function. Seeing none, we'll move on. If we can have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 4th, 2021 council reorganization meeting.
Giles McCormick will move. Handle second.
Okay. Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon? Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to our regular agenda. We do not have a consent agenda this evening. Keep in mind, for members of the public, we did have a reorg just a week ago, so there wasn't a whole lot of stuff, business. There were a couple items that were urgent that we needed to get on. And a year ago, when I suggested to Sally about the scheduling, it kind of was frustrating to go all the way to the end of January, so I wanted to make sure we hit the ground running in 2021. First up on regular agenda is ordinance 2021-1, This is Creating the Position of Business Administrator in the Borough of Flemington. This is a first reading.
Tilly will move.
Giles McCormick will second.
Sally?
All right, Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
So it's been introduced.
Okay, and the public hearing for that will be on the 25th.
Yep.
Thank you. Next up is Resolution 2021-33, Conforming Consistency of Flemington Center Urban Renewal LLC's December 14th, 2020 Draft Site Plan Concept Plan Submission with the Redevelopment Plan and the Redevelopment Agreement. If we could have a motion?
I'll move.
Giles McCormick will second.
So what this is, is this is the final action that council will be taking on this, on the Flemington Center Urban Renewal project. Council has had the opportunity to look at the site plans. And this is basically passing off the football to the planning board. We did have an executive session earlier so that council could have, ask legal questions regarding what it meant and what this actually is doing. Is there any council discussion?
I guess just to clarify, we had to look at the site plan to make sure that there was no big, massive, significant changes, no surprises. And it was found to be consistent with the redevelopment plan. So it's just, you know, just to clarify that this, yes, this will go to the planning board. And that's where they're gonna get into all the nitty-gritty details.
Yeah, on a high level, you know, having been on the redevelopment committee, it looks much, it looks consistent with what we've been talking about with this newly adapted compromise plan from a high level. But just, just to reinforce what Jeremy was saying in terms of the planning board getting into those nitty-gritties about specific heights and restrictions, and Beth was talking about a few hundred of them to make sure that they comply appropriately with the redevelopment plan, and from that high level, I certainly think there was no, there was nothing in the middle of the plan that was unexpected. You know, some strange obelisk or something. It certainly looks like the plans from earlier.
Great. Any other discussion? Sally, call the vote.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimously approved.
Okay, thank you. So that will be, stay tuned for the So that will be, stay tuned for the planning board schedule on that. So watch the agenda and we'll post that stuff as well and let folks know when it's coming. Next up is 2021-34. This is awarding, this is a resolution awarding a construction contract to Delane Contracting Company. This is for existing water tank renovations and improvements for the Borough of Flemington Water Department. It's been a long time coming. It's been ongoing for some time. We finally went out to bid and once council approves the contract, the construction contract, I'll get started on that.
Amen. Tilly will move.
Thank you.
Giles McCormick will second.
Any other council discussion? Okay, Sally, call the vote.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Sally, can you, when you get a copy of that resolution with signatures and everything, can you send it to me just so I can forward that to DEP? Not DEP, USDA?
Thank you. The water tank one.
Yeah, the water tank, because, yeah, they need, I wrote a letter to them, you know, confirming that we're doing everything properly, et cetera. So this is the last, the last thing they'll need from me.
Okay.
Excellent. Next up is Resolution 2021-35. This is adopting a commenting policy for the public at the upcoming 2021 budget workshop sessions. Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Handle second.
Okay, so basically what this is, because we'll be doing the budget meetings via Zoom webinar, I wanted to make sure we had a commenting policy in place. It is in line with council. There will be one public comment period during the budget meetings. Very tentatively scheduled, starting February 4th and meeting on Thursday evenings at 7:00 PM through the beginning or mid-March. Hard to say when we'll wrap up. It's usually four, sometimes it's five, sometimes it's six. Sally will publish that and she'll also be publishing a link to participate in that. It's a three-minute public comment at the beginning of each session, and of course, you'll always be able to comment via email as well to the public comment email box. And is there any other comment or question on the council discussion?
Did we, is their decision on, is the public comments, is that can be at the beginning or the end?
In the resolution, it does say in the beginning. I think we struggled with making people sit through the entire meeting before they have to make their comment. Understanding how late these sometimes go, I think with that email option.
Accessibility.
Yeah. Yeah, they can also email for the next, in advance of the next one. I think it's I think it's workable.
Is there any other discussion? Sally, we're still getting a weird echo from you.
It's the fan on my computer. I don't know what you want me.
Yeah, no, go ahead and call the vote.
Then I'll mute. Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, it's adopted.
Excellent. Next up is Resolution 2021-37. This is authorizing the termination of a shared service agreement with the City of Lambertville for the services of a business administrator. If we could have a motion?
Philly will move. Go ahead, Kaylin, you have.
Whoever wants it, whatever Sally wants to do, who she heard.
As you may recall, and towards the end of 2020, we adopted a a shared service agreement with the City of Lambertville for to hire a business administrator, to split a business administrator, they would be the lead. They had not hired anyone at this point. And in discussion, we, I felt that it's better if we just move on. We have, I have discussed with Tara and Sally as to what we can do and with the creation of the position, and then we'll be making a move on that in the near future as to the future of a business administrator with the Borough of Flemington.
The shared services agreement does provide, we have to give them, I believe it's 90 days notice of the cancellation.
Okay.
And it can be for any reason at all. So with the passage of this resolution, I can send out that letter to them tomorrow. And I think, I think it's pretty obvious. I think they're anticipating it. They they haven't moved on hiring the business administrator, and I don't think, I don't think they can expect Flemington to sit out there floundering with a position they need filled for, you know, months and months and months.
And this doesn't preclude us from doing something similar in the future. The way that the business administrative position ordinance is written, again, gives us that flexibility of part-time shared services, both like.
If, you know, if things change and Lambertville moves and hires someone and you know, he's just reentering.
This allows us to move forward.
Yeah. Right now.
We hadn't, we hadn't invested money into it at this point. There's no reason to stay stuck.
There's no loss and there's no reason to hold on to it. Any other comment or discussion? Sally, call the vote.
Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All righty. Done.
Okay, next up is Resolution 2021-38. This is authorizing the filing of an amicus brief in the matter of the adoption of amendments. This is the RTM UA category one and authorizes council, council, council for council to file an amicus brief. We could have a motion?
Philly will move.
Giles McCormick will second.
So we did have an executive session earlier this evening to discuss this, so council could ask our legal counsel questions about this amicus brief. Basically, the high level here is that in 2020, the DEP did designate a number of streams in New Jersey as category one. One of those designations does impact the outflow area of RTM UA. They have decided to file lawsuit against the DEP regarding that designation. They have asked us to join in by filing an amicus brief to represent Flemington's interest in that. The interest is that if the category one designation holds, it could impact future development in the borough, redevelopment mostly, as well as could be extremely expensive for upgrades to accommodate that category one designation as well. So it's kind of a big thing. There were some issues. There's obviously, there's environmental concerns that the borough has as well. And there's some other, you know, relationship issues with RTM UA that come into play with this as well. So if council has any questions for the RTM UA folks who are here, let me know and I will bring them into the meeting.
Yeah, I guess I have some questions for them.
John Kanzelak is here. Can you hear me?
Hi, John. Yeah.
Okay.
And I just brought Margaret in. And John, you mentioned somebody else. If there's another person from RTM UA here online who would like to be recognized.
Yeah, mayor would be George Tyler. On or not, or?
Okay, I don't see Mr. Tyler here.
Okay, but Margaret is.
Margaret is here. So just to recognize, John Kanzelak is the chairman of the RTM UA. And Margaret Carmelli is their legal counsel.
Correct.
So John, just trying to get a better understanding of this. So the water that's discharged from the treatment facility now enters into the South Branch, correct?
Correct.
And the water that's discharged, are there certain standards that the water has to meet to enter into the river there?
Yes, there, yes, there are. And that's one of the concerns that we have is that, and Margaret can better elaborate on this. You know, we have certain standards based on our permit now that we have to meet. And the concern is, is with the C1 designation, future permits, those restrictions are going to be greater and become, you know, extremely expensive for us to meet those, the new standards. You know, and our argument goes back as far as we're contesting the, you know, the science behind the designation of that portion of the South Branch with that. We've hired environmental professionals to go through a review DEP's documentation that they put together. And our professionals do not feel that 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 portion of the South Branch should be designated as a C1 waterway. I don't know, and if it's okay with you, council minutes, if I could ask Margaret to maybe elaborate further on what I said, if she thinks there's a need to?
Certainly, Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity and just, someone let me know if you can hear me, please.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we expect, as has been the case in the past, that as permits are renewed and reissued, there will be additional requirements for limits on different parameters. For example, the PFAS and PFOAS contaminants are currently being regulated by DEP in groundwater permits, and they're setting a surface water standard. In the past, there was a standard for arsenic, which was appealed by a large group of primitives and ultimately has not yet been imposed. But as new contaminants have standards, those standards will be more stringent, we expect, as a result of the C1 classification of this stream segment. I think what John noted is also very important in that we are questioning the science behind the listing and the technical support for the listing. Significantly, since the adoption of the rule, DEP placed this segment of the river on its list of impaired waterways, waterways that are impacted and impaired for certain constituents. Not as a waterway that in the C1 program has a particular ecological or other value to preserve. Second, we're also challenging the fact that the record available, the rulemaking record available to RTM UA and the public was not complete, and it wasn't available and accessible to review. So we weren't provided with a full opportunity to evaluate the information before DEP because we didn't have all that information. So on renewal and the imposition of limits for new parameters, and also if there was an expansion of the facility, that would, those would be impacted by the C1 classification.
Right, now, just to be clear, you said more, the possibility of more stringent, more, more or less more regulation, but I don't know, from what I've been told, from what my understanding is, we, there are certain standards now that the water has to meet, and with the C1 designation, the water, it can't get worse than what it is now. Are there any other additional regulations or restrictions beyond that in the future that would be possible?
Well, we would be limited to no measurable change in the water from what's in the water today. So we would need to do a study of the stream, which is very expensive, to identify for a particular pollutant. Example, the PFAS or PFOA contaminants, we'd have to study the stream to identify what's there now today. And that would be the limit of the discharge. For comparison, under the current, the classification before this regulation, we had, there was a water quality limit that was established for the surface water. And we couldn't cause the surface water to exceed that number. So we might be allowed to discharge some amount of the substance up to the surface water quality standard. Now it would basically be under the C1, a no measurable change. So it is more, it is more stringent. And it's a much more extensive and expensive study to establish what the current amount in the water is.
So.
Okay, so would you say the RTM UA is unique in this situation? Or of the 600 some odd miles that have been approved as C1 streams or water bodies, that there are other municipalities dealing with similar issues?
So in the rulemaking public record, there were not other facilities identified that would be affected by this rulemaking. That may have been incorrect. There may have been, I think that, we think there were several other treating facilities, whether they're private or public, that discharged to a water body that was proposed for listing. But they, I don't know if they know that they were even included by this. Historically, there was one other rulemaking that designated water bodies as C1s. And there were some impacted treatment facilities. And their experience has been that it is significantly more expensive to do the stream studies required to establish how much of the substances is in the water, and that it may be technologically and/or financially impossible to treat to the level you need to. And in particular, if there is ever an expansion, that is more often financially and technologically just not feasible. But even the treatment to a new limit may pose a great challenge.
Right, and I don't know, I mean, part of me feels as though that's kind of the spirit and intent of the rules themselves is to to make water bodies, and we can get into the science and questionability of whether or not it's a C1 stream, but of maintaining at least the quality of the water where it is now, rather than have it deteriorate or worsen in the future due to increased development or effluent into that water body. It seems like in part we're disagreeing or we are looking to to oppose the very nature of the rules themselves and what they're looking to do.
What we've appealed here is based on the fact that the record that DEP relied on was not made available to the public, including RTM UA and Flemington and Hunterdon County, that's also filed an appeal and Raritan Township. That record was not made available to the public when the rulemaking started, so that there was an opportunity. when the rulemaking started so that there was an opportunity to review and understand the information. And we are also challenging the fact that the listing of this segment was not supported by the scientific data. So if DEP wants to make all the streams in New Jersey C ones and subject to this same level of review, they can change their rules and do that. That's they could propose new rules and try to change the program, but to arbitrarily impose the program in certain areas is not consistent with their mission or even protecting water. We have a right to know what the impact here would be on the water body and the obligation of an agency to follow the Administrative Procedures Act and respect the public's ability to participate is crucial. These are not errors that can be corrected after the fact. So in the final rulemaking. For example, DEP determined not to list certain tributaries of the listed waterways. One of those tributaries would have impacted Flemington Borough with some buffer areas, as I understand it. But between the draft and the final action, DEP removed that from the rule. And in part, that was because of comments that the record didn't support the that listing and that the information that DEP said was available wasn't available when you tried to access it during the comment period. But we can't rely on the agents, an agency, and I mean, I'm not picking on DEP, but we can't rely on an agency to correct errors in the public's right to participate on an ad hoc basis. I think the act, the Procedures Act is there for a reason to allow the public to participate and the agencies need to uh need to follow that. We, of course, support clean water. We're not looking to provide any lush treatment. What we do want to be held to is the same standard that other facilities are held to. Because why should our rate payers pay more? Because we're being held to a different standard and to have the rules applied equally. And if and a benefit to the environment shown as part of a rulemaking or the rules modified, that's also an option.
Thank you for taking time to answer my questions here. So so it sounds like the basis for for the this lawsuit is twofold. It's one, the inadequate uh public notice or ability for the public to comment. And then two, questioning the the science uh upon which the designation was made. I mean, more or less, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. Yes, and the the RTM UA did have um technical experts who did submit a report. They did field investigation. They went out and looked at the conditions. These were trained, qualified, degreed people and DEP relied on volunteer sampling with little training and education and um did in, but we did submit a report from people who conduct these studies all the time. Interestingly enough, after this rulemaking, now DEP no longer uses volunteers to sample and instead is relying on the same credentialed people who have studied in this field and have trained to assess the flora and fauna in the stream.
Okay, so I I I guess one of the where I'm getting stuck or where I have issue is is um you know, we're the Flemington Council here to me is, as I feel it, um is that we're we're kind of being asked to join this in good faith based upon your professionals uh that have been hired and and your data. None of which I have seen. I haven't seen any evidence that according to this resolution. Flemington has determined the designation of the South Branch as C one is arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. I've seen no, no evidence that it's arbitrary, no evidence that it's capricious, and no evidence that it's unreasonable. And uh and and I think if the council is to weigh this fairly and fully would be to hear from a member of the DEP to come and give their side of the the argument here and allow them the opportunity to defend their numbers and their decision making. Before this council enters into any type of lawsuit and commits upwards of $10,000. I I don't know if anyone would like to speak to that or not.
Well, currently, under the court rules, the motions to appear as an amicus need to be filed, I believe it's by the 24th of this month. That's the end of the briefing schedule. Um, RTM UA and Hunterdon County and also Raritan Township have filed their initial briefs already. Certainly, we are, would be happy to share those. I, you know, I don't know if at this point that would be of any of any help. DEP has not yet filed any briefs in this matter. But we do have the deadline, which, as I said, right now is the around the 24th to file any motions. We have been told that there are some other groups that will file um motions as friends of the court. But I, if there's something that I can, we can get to the council that at this point that would facilitate that consideration, I mean, we're happy to to do that.
Yeah, I don't know. I just have.
I would point out, Chris, have you, have you taken time to read the uh ruling in the reg- in the New Jersey Register when it came out last year?
The what?
The uh ruling from the when DEP made this ruling, when it was published in the New Jersey Register last year.
Did I read the ruling? No, was it the ruling hundreds of pages?
Yeah, but only part of it had to do with us.
No, I did not.
Okay, because I think we should take a vote on it. And if it comes to where we need that extra information, Margaret, then we'll request it from you then.
Thank you.
So Kim's calling for a vote.
So Kim, you're calling to to vote on this and then get the information later? I don't understand.
On DPW, Chris, and we've been through this at nauseam in the DPW meeting, so. Again, here we go. You know, you had the agenda and the, so what was on it? We had executive session and I don't know.
Well, I had limited time in an executive session to ask questions and I only got this on Thursday.
Yeah.
And and.
I guess that wasn't enough time for you to ask questions then.
Okay, that's when I received it too, so.
All right, I'm not faulting anyone for doing this on Thursday, it's just.
When someone calls for a vote, there's really not supposed to be any more discussion. We're just supposed to take a vote.
Thank you, Sally. I'm gonna call the vote. Um, Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
No.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, that resolution is approved. Okay, so I have removed the RTM UA folks, so we can move on. Last resolution of the evening is Resolution 2021 dash 39. This extends the deadline for dog and cat licensing 60 days. It's due to the public health emergency due to COVID-19. Please note, you must still have your dog and cat vaccinated against rabies. This is just an effort to keep people out of Borough Hall. If we could have a motion.
Handle move.
Giles McCormick will second.
Um, as I said, this is really just an effort to to limit traffic into Borough Hall. Uh, you know, a lot of people do come in with cash. They want to pay and um and just to kind of spread some of that out and just make it a little more customer friendly. But I do want to stress, if you are a pet owner, you must kind of, you know, if you, if the deadline was still at the end of the month, you would have been um you know, required to make sure you had that rabies vaccinations done on your household pets. Please consider to do that. Flinky says, please also do that and please vote, although we'll get down there and register because I'm in Borough Hall. Is there any other council discussion? Sally, call the vote.
Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, that's proved. Thank you. That brings us to our second public comment session this evening. Again, it's three minutes. You get one opportunity, a maximum of 30 minutes. And if you'd like to make a public comment, please go ahead and raise your hand to do that. Sally, if you could mute. This cat, while we're waiting to see if anyone does, has perfect timing recently. All of last year, the year before, she never joined me in a meeting, but well, obviously, she kind of, because it was at Borough Hall. I am not seeing anybody raise their hand, so we'll go ahead and move on to the attorney's report. Sally, before we move on, I'm sorry, do you have any emails in the public comment mailbox?
No, there weren't any.
Great. Uh, so we'll move on to the attorney's report if we have one from Tara and I'll invite uh Dick Cushing to join us and introduce his himself as well during this attorney's report.
So like uh the mayor said, I am making a list of anything that maybe has some loose ends that need to be tied up, trying to tie up what I can before I go out. On the 22nd. So a couple of things that have just been sort of ongoing with regard to uh reviewing and redacting all the executive session minutes so that Sally can more easily just provide them via Oprah requests. I believe I'm through the end of 2018 now, so I'll send those off to Sally so you have them. And then obviously any other executive minutes that get requested, we can redact um as needed, but she'll have up through 2018 done, so she can just send them out without having to talk to anyone. Councilman Hand has a Councilman, Councilwoman Hand has gotten the community garden going, so I will be consulting with her on getting all the notices out for the public hearings, the um the physical signs that have to be posted about the public hearing because the community garden is going in a green uh park preserved with Green Acres money. There's just a public hearing process that we have to go through. I don't anticipate that that will be very contentious. Additionally, looking at how to.
Tara, I had a legal question on that. Will there be additional Green Acres requirements that we'll have to satisfy in order for our public works to uh extend water down to where the gardens at?
That I don't know. Um, the only thing so far, we've, we've been in contact with Green Acres. They've we've consulted with them on the notices and then also just regulatory things that we have to deal with with um memberships and charging for that, but that's another issue that we can bring up to them with, you know, extending the water up there.
Yeah, I mean, technically it's construction, but I think it's just pecs to, you know.
So that'll be, that'll be another thing. And they've been, Green Acres has been very, very helpful. So I think that'll be an easy thing to ask them about. And with regard to 144 Main Street, I have not heard from the property, the the buyers uh about starting the um tank removal and remediation and testing. I I presume it's because the holidays got away and it's been very, very cold since then. But I will, I'll seek to um get an update from them and see if they have a timeline. Um, let's see. I will be talking with the um animal control officer, hopefully sometime this week, early next week, just about updating the ordinances a little bit. Getting rid of some things that just are a little archaic or draconian, um updating it because her job really overlaps a lot of times with the police department when it comes to addressing animal hoarding and nuisance. And so there's things that she doesn't get involved that are more handled by your police department, so. We're going to update the ordinances to reflect that and make them a little bit cleaner. And oh, and then also for and for the next meeting, we will, I'll have prepared um an agreement with Raritan Township for the municipal court. Uh, I'm working with their attorney to get the extension agreement drafted and then also an agreement that'll go into effect after the court uh resumes normal operations. Raritan Township has agreed in concept to extending the agreement on the current terms without uh increasing the fees until the court can start operating again and actually uh collecting fees. And Mayor, unless I'm forgetting anything.
That's it. A couple other ordinances I've asked you to work on, but we'll hold those for now. Since we're not at the point of discussing yet.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay. That brings us to our next item of business, which is the payment of the bills, but we don't have any bills to pay. Because we jumped in a little too early and we threw Bill off as a game on it. So if we could have a motion to please amend the agenda to remove the payment of bills.
Giles McCormick will move.
Billy will second.
Hey, uh, Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon? Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right. Agenda has just been amended to remove payment of the bills. Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any reason to go into executive session? Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead before we adjourn. I will point out, I'll send a Mr. Cushing will send me his cell phone number because I may or may not have it since I've switched phones recently. And uh we'll uh set something up at some point so you guys can get to know him. Or you can just call him and introduce yourselves and he can tell you about himself. So with that in mind.
Speaking of cell phones, um. Okay, never mind.
With that in mind, uh, we can have a motion to adjourn.
I'll take it.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
About some other stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, good evening.
Good night, good night, Stacy.